Good evening, we'll call our meeting to order. Today is Wednesday, May tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. This is the Monroe Township Board of Education meeting. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Allen, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Ms. Alvarez?
Here.
Ms. Belko?
Here.
Ms. Beerman? Ms. Bora?
Here.
Ms. DePaine?
Here.
Ms. Fabiano?
Here.
Ms. Ratner?
Here.
Ms. Scott?
Here.
Ms. Gerby?
Here.
Mr. Tofano?
Here.
We have a form. In accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Law, the Monroe Township Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published and electronic notice provided by having the date, time, and place thereof posted May fifth, two thousand and twenty-three at all schools, on the district website, Home News Tribune, Cranberry Press, and filed with the clerk of the municipality.
Okay, our next item is our closed session resolution. Be it resolved that the Board of Education of the Township of Monroe hereby moves into closed session in accordance with the Sunshine Law, Chapter two thirty-one of the Public Laws of nineteen seventy-five, NJSA ten colon four dash six through ten colon four dash twenty-one, to discuss the following subjects: harassment, intimidation, or bullying; matters protected by attorney-client privilege; MTEA level-three grievance; confidential personnel matters; MTEA negotiations. Following closed session, action may be taken. The discussion conducted in closed session can be disclosed to the public at such time as the need for confidentiality no longer exists.
So I'm moved.
Can I get a motion?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we will go into our closed session, and we'll be back at seven fifteen. Thank you. Good evening, we'll come back into our public session. Coming out of closed session, we do have a resolution that I will read. It is recommended that the members of the Board of Education approve the previously submitted memorandum of agreement between the Monroe Township Education Association and the Monroe Township Board of Education for the period of July one, two thousand and twenty-three, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-six. Can I get a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Tofano, seconded by Ms. Bora. Any questions? Yep, Ms. Allen, may we have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePaine?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Abstain, recuse.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
It's our pleasure that we approve this memorandum of agreement. We are very fortunate to have members of our MTA here this evening, and I know that the MTA will be having their meeting too, and on behalf of the Board of Education, we want to let you know that we absolutely support our staff and our teachers and everybody here in Monroe Township. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is our Student Board Members Report. We have Siobhan Gladapoli here.
To start off with the middle school, the MTMS Culinary Program is in conjunction with the Brookside Elementary School, along with its MTMS Culinary Program, and they're going to be hosting the annual MT Bowls on Friday, May twelfth. On May seventeenth and May eighteenth, the high school will be bringing approximately fourteen MTHS marching band students over to the middle school to give an assembly in the band room for the seventh and eighth grade band students. The NJSLA testing will begin on the week of May seventh, May second, with the sixth grade, and currently, the eighth grade is halfway through their testing cycle. The seventh grade will test next week, and Penn Medicine came to the middle school on May ninth to teach CPR to their students during the gym classes. And this coming Monday, May fifteenth, next Monday, the eighth grade will be attending the annual eighth-grade trip to Frogbridge. Over at Brookside, the fourth grade had a poetry carousel last week, and the students rotated through each classroom and learned about different types of poetry. The MT Police Unity Pyjama Day, students and staff enjoyed the pajama day in support of the Monroe Township Police Unity Tour, and there's a field trip to Six Flags, well, that past Monday, and some of our classes enjoyed a beautiful day at Six Flags Safari. Over at Mill Lake, May is a busy month at Mill Lake Elementary School. A big shout-out to Mill Lake Woodland PTO, they have made this week for the Staff Appreciation Memorial, showering the staff with fun and yummy treats. Successful plant sale generated many Mother's Day gifts and spraying us into spring. On Thursday, May eighteenth, Mill Lake students will participate in the District Unified Field Day, followed up by a pizza party. On May twenty-fifth, Mill Lake will host its own Field Day, which is shaping up to be the best one yet. Early June will focus on the new arrivals of the fall and their oldest departers in the spring. Mill Lake will host kindergarten orientation on June sixth, and a third-grade student trip to our sister school, Woodland, will take place on June first, as well as June second. And to round out the month, all students will celebrate their third-grade class with the school clap out on June sixteen. Over at Brookside, on April twenty-sixth, the Barclaybrook School participated in a Police Unity Tour fundraiser, where students, as well as the staff, wore pajamas with a donation to the Police Unity Tour. The funds collected benefited Team Monroe's donations to this year's Police Unity Tour, and it was a fun day for everyone that benefited for a great cause. This week is also Teacher Appreciation Week, so we would like to thank all the teachers and staff at Barclaybrook who worked so hard to make the school a great place for their students. And at Oak Tree, it is also Teacher Appreciation Week, and their PTA started Monday morning with a beautiful breakfast and goodies throughout the week. Ms. Dinsmore, as well as Ms. Aguiar, visited all the staff today with a caffeine and more cart. Our Teachers Appreciation Teaching Committee planned cookies and milk one day, and a lot of day, chips and dips, and also a lot of fun raffles, and just, these are some small ways to show the staff how much we love and appreciate them. And then, the NJSLA testing for grade three has been completed and was a huge success, and the Oak Tree students are participating in a World Cup Soccer Tournament this week. Each class represents the same countries from our Olympics Day in February, and the team will continue on Field Day on June second. Over at Woodland, the Advanced Band Students participated in the CJMEA Elementary Middle School Band and Orchestra Festival in May two thousand and twenty-three, and this is an amazing opportunity for the students to receive feedback, as well as an excellent opportunity to perform. And on April twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, eleven wonderful Woodland students participated in the annual Woodland Mill Lake Variety Show. The show was facilitated by Mr. Ratner, and it fested martial art performances, vocal performances, as well as instrumental presentations with the guitar and piano. Ms. Fleming and Ms. Herman's classes combined forces and completed two Funteen Day STEM events. The first was for the May the Fourth Day with you and the Star Wars STEM activity. This activity challenged students to collaborate and create hideouts for Luke Skywalker and Princess Leia. The second activity was related to Cinco de Mayo. The students were charged with using materials to supply creating sombreros, maracas, etc. And the Woodland winners of the New Jersey Fire Prevention Poster Contest are Arjun Agnesh, who won first place, as well as Abigail Pitta, who won second place, and both will receive a Bonzinobles gift card, which is generously donated by the Monroe Township Fire District One. And our staff enjoyed the opportunity of sharing their workdays with children on April twenty-seventh, and had many visitors, and the school community enjoyed sharing our learning with their families.
Great, thank you very much. There's a lot of great activities going around in our schools, especially for our Staff Appreciation Week, so thank you for your report. The next item on our agenda is our presentation. This evening, we have the great honor of giving recognition to our Teacher of the Year, our Support Professionals of the Year. This evening, we attended the board prior to our meeting, attended a beautifully done dinner, I guess you would call it, event, cooked by us, by our staff, our culinary students here at the high school. They did an amazing job, and it was all to honor these individuals that make such a difference in our schools and in our district, and are the true heroes for our children. So, Ms. Chanley, Dr. Lehman, if you would like to begin our presentations, I just, on behalf of the Board of Education, we want to say congratulations to each and every one of our staff that we're going to recognize tonight, and truly thank you for all that you do for our district.
Good evening, everyone. Could just echo the words of Ms. Gerby. We are very fortunate, we had a wonderful staff recognition reception, and the food was excellent. Chef Docree did a fabulous job, and the children did a lovely job as well. We're very fortunate that we're able to have a lot of, a lot of great events within our own home. We believe that's very important. So without any further ado, we're going to begin with Mill Lake, and we have Danielle Patafini, Educational Services Professional of the Year. Our Teacher of the Year for Mill Lake is Jeannie Barca. Our Teacher of the Year from Woodland School, Michelle Costa. Excepting on her behalf, will be Dr. Chetta. From Applegoth School, our Educational Services Professional of the Year, Nicole Shelton. And from Applegoth School, our Teacher of the Year, Laura Orchard. Representing Barclaybrook School, Educational Services Professional of the Year, Ryan Ronan. And our Teacher of the Year for Barclaybrook School, Michelle Giaquinto. From Monroe Township Middle School, Educational Services Professional of the Year, Nicole Ponteralo. And our Teacher of the Year from Monroe Township Middle School, Daniel Fields. From Brookside School, Educational Services Professional of the Year, Angelica Geter. And our Teacher of the Year from Brookside School, Angel Pavisi. From Oak Tree School, Educational Services Professional of the Year, Maureen Jones. And our Teacher of the Year for Oak Tree School, Ashley Torres. And last but not least, our High School, Educational Services Professional of the Year, from Monroe Township High School, Lauren Marinoff. And Monroe Township High School, Teacher of the Year, Ariel Siegel. Nice round of applause for all of our recipients, thank you so much.
If we could just give them all one more round of applause. Thank you so much for all that you do for our school district. Okay, the next item on our agenda is our committee reports. Any committees wishing to give a report this evening? Ms. Belko?
I have two reports to give tonight. The first one is the curriculum report, so we held the curriculum meeting last Wednesday, I think it was Wednesday, May second. I don't know, we've had so many meetings lately, I can't remember what day as well. And we had quite a few items on the agenda. We reviewed curriculum updates for Latin I, Spanish grades three through five, and science grade eight. The curriculum documents were reviewed and updated to be what the NJSLA standards are, and everything can be seen on the, on the committee report, as well as the documents that are available on our curriculum guide that's on the website. We also had a review of the annual renewals for several contracts, and those were all presented as what we need to have for certain pieces. The administration goes through every year and decides what we need and what we're using, and making sure that we're not renewing something that we're not using and not doing anything with. And actually, there was a reduction, because there's one program, and off the top of my head, I can't remember it, is that we reduced the use of, what was the one we reduced?
Study Island.
Study Island, yes, Study Island, so we reduced the licenses or whatever we have for Study Island, because we're not using it at certain grade levels, but we are using it more at other grade levels, so we are continuing with that. We had an update from Mr. Maralda about the summer programming, that information is out on the website and already being advertised, and moving forward with the summer update for two thousand and twenty-three. And then, there was also another update, we got a good report about a meeting that the administration and Mr. Maralda had with Middlesex College, and moving forward with a partnership with them for all of our students, and the work-based learning program that we're revamping and revising in the high school, and looking forward to that. So that's the curriculum report for tonight.
Does anybody have any questions on that? Ms. Ratner?
I had the opportunity to watch the curriculum meeting, there was a lot of great information. I did have a question about the teen arts program. I had heard the, I guess some of the comments, I know we're continuing forward with this year. I think one thing that is great is that it does allow students, they want to take dance classes, but also wants to take coding, let's say, as an elective, the opportunity to do both. My question was whether or not the cost for teen arts also includes the busing. There were some issues with the busing this year, it was a very long trip, it was about two hours each way, so I wasn't sure.
It does include busing. We do not have the capacity to run transportation through the district there, so part of our costs includes transportation.
Okay, so it'd go one cost for all?
Yep.
All right.
And if you, the contract that's being approved, you know, you have a choice, and it's a little bit more costly, but we've always provided, we've always had them provide transportation, because we don't have the capacity to do that internally. Just the time that those runs happen doesn't work for our transportation system.
All right, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? All right, Ms. Belko, your other report?
Yes, I'm giving the Financial Committee report for Ms. Beerman this evening, so please be sure to view the committee meeting video for expanded details. We had a monthly review of the attorney fees for March, and they were thirty-three thousand sixty-six dollars and seventy-eight cents. Monthly review of the bill list was two million seven hundred and eighty-seven thousand one hundred and eighty. We reviewed and recommended by the committee for approval by the full board. We did have an addendum of one million one hundred and twenty-seven thousand two hundred ninety, and that is also being recommended for approval. The audit update, Ms. Allen advised the committee that she's preparing the request for proposal, and will have information concerning applicants forthcoming as the proposal harvest process proceeds. Budget update, Ms. Allen advised the committee that the budget has been submitted to the county, the committee had a discussion concerning the need for the district to shift to a budget vote approval process for next year, this is needed to be able to exceed the two percent cap on the tax levy. The district expenditures are outpacing the cap even with a fiscally prudent approach in all areas. Therefore, in order to try and maintain programs, the best path is a public vote on the budget. A resolution is anticipated in the coming months to make this transition. Annual contract renewals, the committee reviewed various annual contract renewals which appear on the agenda for approval by the full board. The committee had no concern regarding the contracts, only exception being the contract for the BNL school pictures the committee requested, looking into whether a lower-cost package option could be incorporated into the pricing structure, and whether all district schools could be covered under one vendor. That's the report for the Finance Committee, thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Belko? No? Okay, so another committee wishing to give a report? Ms. Fabiano?
On Tuesday, May second, the Legislative Action and Community Engagement Committee meeting, committee met, sorry, the committee discussed initiating a letter-writing campaign in hopes of drawing the attention of our legislators regarding their funding and imposing impact fees. We talked about reaching out to Senator Greenstein and agreed to have Ms. Gerby draft a letter inviting the senator to a future committee meeting, which was actually sent out earlier today, inviting her to our June meeting. The committee also discussed writing a resolution for the November NJSPA Delegate Assembly regarding impact fees and the pending legislation surrounding them. We discussed the idea of testifying at the Assembly Senate Budget Hearings, which are taking place currently until early June. We also discussed our district factor group and how there are other districts with similar enrollment data that are in the same district factor group as Monroe, but have been getting significantly more funding. The committee raised concerns that the district factor groups have not been updated since two thousand. I reached out to the Department of Education regarding the factor groups and possibly updating them with more recent census data, however, they responded that there were no immediate plans to do so. Mr. Maralda shared with the committee that the community referendum survey will be closed on May fifteenth. Please, if you haven't already done so, take a moment to complete it. The results will be shared and discussed at the June committee meeting.
Does anybody have any questions for Mrs. Fabiano?
I just have one question. Were any other letters sent out to any other officials, or just Linda Greenstein?
The committee decided to invite Senator Greenstein.
Nobody else?
We can, we can discuss having more invitations sent out to the other legislators as well, maybe those on the education committees. Anybody else have anything for Ms. Fabiano?
I just want to add a comment.
Yes.
I think we did discuss this last year also. If we're going to do a letter-writing campaign, I think we should reach out further than Senator Greenstein, Senator Wingo Paul, whoever we can. I know it's like casting a wide net, but we've got to, since we're doing the work, might as well send it to as many people as we can.
Absolutely. Okay, any other committees? Ms. Bora?
The Personnel Committee met on Monday, Tuesday, May third. Board members in attendance were myself, Ms. Beerman, Ms. Scott, Mr. Tofano, and Ms. Gerby. Administrators in attendance were Mrs. Chanley and Dr. Lehman. We reviewed the current openings in the district, we currently have eleven vacancies, six due to resignations, one due to retirement, two due to transfer, and one due to leave, and one is a new position. We had four responses to our exit survey this month, and the reasons cited were retirement, taking time to stay home with family, relocating, and finally, accepting a position closer to home. And that concludes the committee report for Personnel.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions for Ms. Bora? All right, seeing none, Mr. Tofano?
I have BGNT. The committee met on May third. First thing on the agenda was the Acevedo Residence Sewer Water Easement. Administration provided an update on the involvement of Porzio Law and Monroe Township Municipal Utilities Department. Mrs. Acevedo was, has been notified that she may not proceed with the work until further authorization from the MTMUD and the MTBOE Legal Council, which she must pay for. Second item on the agenda was the office space planning for special services. The committee reviewed current fall plans and staffing at the three leased office suites at Monroe Commons. Various options for relocating special services staff throughout the district and department files to long-term storage were reviewed. Administration may hold off on renewing the Monroe Commons lease for two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four year, should a viable plan for an immediate move be finalized. Third item on the agenda was buses for sale. The committee reviewed a list of nine school buses that have exceeded their mandatory usage durations. Administration will prepare a resolution authorizing these vehicles for sale, along with other district vehicles previously approved for sale. Fourth thing on the agenda was the ROD grants for district telephone system, Applegoth roof, and the Applegoth HVAC upgrades. The committee reviewed the project ROD grant application with only one of the eight individual telephone systems grant applications reviewed for record. Administration advised the ROD grants not be used for referendum projects, and that should the grants be approved or awarded, that the board would have to come up with their own share of funds. The board has already committed their share of funds for the telephone system in two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four budget, and funds for design only for the Applegoth roof replacement project. Funds for construction of roofs would have to be appropriated in the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five operating budget or other financing avenues. Administration recommended that the committee, I'm sorry, administration recommended that the committee concurred with appropriating grant monies received for the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three emergent and capital needs grant for design of the HVAC renovations at Applegoth School that are included in the ROD grant application. The board then, the board will then be prepared to proceed with ROD grant projects or portions of each project that align with available capital funding to be appropriated for the two thousand and twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-five season, a year, and, or other financing sources. Number five on the agenda was the NJSIG Safety Grant. Administration informed the committee of an opportunity for a safety grant and recommended applying for the CCTV security upgrade. The committee supports the efforts and will recommend the project via resolution at the upcoming board meeting.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Tofano? Ms. Bora?
I just have a comment to what Mr. Tofano said in the Finance Committee report. The ROD grants that we have approved, you know, that we've applied for, and I'm hoping we get it, it will put us in a situation next year where it's forty percent of what we apply for, and the cost for the roof, the HVAC, the communications upgrade, is all almost close to ten thousand, ten million dollars, all of it put together, almost. I think if I'm doing my maths right, it's eight hundred thousand for every school for the communication, it's almost six million for the roof, if we do all the roofs, HVAC. So if we don't have any other help, we have to go out with the budget situation, we have to start talking about changing that gap. It has to be a very, very quick decision, because this is twenty-four, twenty-five budget that we're looking at, and we don't have the money.
On a side note, we, our committee had tasked Mr. Tay with calling some local builders and asking them if they would contribute their material or labor, or possibly both, to helping us fix those roofs. The committee agreed, and I don't know if we have to take it to the full board for it to the full board for a vote. I don't think we do because it's, so he's gonna, he's gonna make a phone call and see what he can do. It's probably a shot in the dark, but we'll give it a try.
Anything we can do to ask for help, anything is always welcome.
If there is no help, we have to go back out to the taxpayers.
That's right. All right, thank you, Ms. Arminio. Please speak into the microphone.
Yeah, I said if there is no help, like, that's a great idea that Mr. Tofano, you know, brought up at the BGT meeting, because we need, with failed referendums and our 2% cap, we need help. Because if those ROD grants get approved, we get forty percent of the money from the state, but we still have to put sixty percent out from our own budget, and we really, don't really have it. We saw this year's budget. They did an excellent job making it all happen, but nothing. Our surplus is gone.
Ms. Reiner?
Yep, I have a question. I know that if businesses make a donation, that it can be, if they donate computers or furniture, there is a tax write-off for them. Is that something that they can receive for services as well, or is it only for material purposes?
It's the material, not the labor.
Okay. All right, thank you.
You're welcome. Does anybody have anything else for Mr. Tofano? Okay, and I believe that concludes our committee reports. Policy did not meet this month as Strauss Esme did not have any policy updates for us, so the policy committee will be meeting in June. The next item on our agenda is our public forum for agenda items only. If you have, if you wish to address the board, please come up. You have four minutes. State your name and municipality, and again, this is only for agenda items only. Is there anybody
Brian Fabiano, Monroe. Couple of things I was questioning on the renewals. In regards to the principals, how do you come up with the salaries? So for instance, you have Dawn Graziano recommended for, you know, the continuation or the reappoint, reappointment, I guess, and you have a salary of one hundred twenty-five thousand and change with a master's plus thirty, longevity twenty-five years. But then you have a new principal that was hired last year, also master's plus thirty at Mill Lake, that is making approximately eight thousand dollars more than a principal that's been in her role for, will be six years with twenty-five years of longevity. How does that work?
The min's and the maxes that come with their contract is where it goes by. And that's, and then they have their percentages based upon whatever their contract states.
So how, how do you think a principal feels after they have twenty-five years in the district, and they're making eight thousand dollars less than someone who just got hired and has been here for a year? I mean, is that typical? Okay, we'll take it for that value then. I see a number of supervisors are on the agenda, principals, directors. I don't see Mr. Dowling on the agenda. Should he be on this agenda, or is, are certain people not on this agenda at this time? Is there a different schedule?
The short answer to your question is no. There's no different schedule. The folks are being offered a contract or offered a contract. By this time, the folks are not being offered a contract. At this moment, are not on the list.
So Mr. Dowling is not being offered a contract?
I'm not going to discuss any specific individual-
If he was being offered, would he be on the agenda today?
I'm not going to say anything more about any particular individual.
So there are people that could be recommended next month. They don't have to be this month. Is that what you're saying?
No, that's not what I'm saying.
So if you're going to be recommended for next year, any staff that would be recommended should be on this agenda. Taking out the names.
So I'm just, I'll just repeat what I said because I understand the question. So it's a matter of state law that employees who are going to be offered a contract for next year either be offered a contract before May 15th or be informed otherwise, and that's simply a matter of-
So, right, so if they were offered a contract, they'd be on this agenda?
I don't know that I'm going to say any more than I've said, but I think we understand each other.
Great, thank you. So I guess that's months of wasted time here on the residents of this community, students, parents, grandparents, our senior population, many of people who came out to support Sean Dowling. And each one of you who ran for this board said you have the best interests of our children in mind, you have the best interests of our schools in mind, and the best interests of our taxpayers in mind. Quite frankly, I'll call your bluff, because you didn't hear what the people said here. And what people have come out to say about Sean Dowling, what that man has done for the children and our schools, you should be ashamed to yourself. I don't know if you know this, but he's about six months away from being able to retire. He's got a wife who's sick, who's on expensive medical treatments right now. If you can sit here in your heart, as a board member or not a board member, just as a human, and think it's special to do what you're doing to Sean Dowling, maybe you didn't know his circumstances, but I'm sure you did. Maybe you didn't. You should be ashamed of yourselves. And as people in this audience have said, we can't tell you how to do your jobs, as many times as you apparently say that I tell my wife how to do her job here. She's just like any other board member here. But what we can tell you is, we are taxpayers, and we are voters, and we'll hold you responsible in November. Said it once, and I'll say it every meeting until we get to November, we will hold you responsible. And I'll come back up, because should you try to push the election, we'll hold you responsible then too. Thank you.
Michelle Arminio, Monroe. I attended the finance committee meeting, and I heard Ms. Belko's summary of that meeting. And just, again, I stand before you as a member of this community since nineteen eighty, and with historic and institutional knowledge about previously having the vote in April. And I can tell you, I can't tell you what will happen in the future, but I can certainly tell you on a regular basis, a vote in April is not, has limited participation. The budget tends to go down, and what that results in is that, and I don't know if people really grasp what you're asking, if you change the vote to April, that means the 2% cap that has been sort of holding steady for the budgets is going to be abolished essentially, and the board can put any amount in. I don't think there's any restrictions at that point. The board can make any budget that they feel free. Now, that's also acknowledging the predicament, the financial predicament we're in, but you're not asking anyone else, if you do this, than the taxpayers and citizens and residents of Monroe to wholly increase the budget on their tax levy. So people need to really understand that. And again, once again, it's less of a participation from the voters. They tend not to come out for that. What happens then, and again, the people of Monroe should be aware of it, is that if the budget fails, people say, okay, we voted for the budget, we voted it down, it's way too much money, we can't afford it. Well, that's not the end of it. Then that budget, that failed budget, goes to the municipality, and for, once again, the municipality gets involved. But they are very loath to make extreme changes on that board. So historically, when we had the hundred and, a hundred million-dollar budgets and a hundred and eight million-dollar budgets, and they failed because we had those elections in April, historically, the, I think, the most the municipality reduced the budget was five hundred thousand dollars. So that's nominal, it's not substantial, and it doesn't change the tax levy for the citizens. Now, we have had three failed referendums. I know we're in a financial crunch. I would encourage you, instead of, to me, this is not the way to go. We should strive for a limited, another limited referendum for the money that you think we need to make up, and maybe that'll pass, five million, ten million, that would work. But the idea that the solution is to have an unlimited budget against the taxpayers, and we all want the children to benefit by our, what we do for them, but I think this is not the way to go, and I think it really is time that the board members, again, listen to the populace, because we'll never get a referendum passed if we keep raising the budget to such an extent that it's far more than, I think we said, thirty-three dollars for the average three hundred fifty thousand dollar evaluated house. But if we keep increasing that, we will never get what we really need in referendum. So I would ask the board members not to approve that, and I didn't know if it's on tonight's agenda, but please have a really firm discussion about that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Arminio. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? Good evening.
Good evening. I'm not sure if I may be a little bit off base, but I came a little bit late in the, in the board meeting, but one thing that I wanted to address is the challenges we have-
Can we have your name and municipality?
Sure. Alex Kotler. I live in Monroe Township.
Okay.
So the challenge that I'm, that I'd like to address here is our Transportation Department. There's been a number of parents, myself included, that continue to have issues with the Transportation Department where they are-
Sir, this public forum, I'm sorry to interrupt you, is for agenda items only?
Correct, and it says here, removal of teaching staff and renewing contracts, and to my understanding, her contract may be up for renewal, and I would ask that it gets denied.
That contract is not on the agenda.
Well, I said my piece.
Thank you. Good evening.
Prakash Parab, 33, Denard Drive. Congratulations to all the teachers who were recognized today, and congratulations for all the students. I watched it on the video later on. I couldn't come to the meeting. And you guys are doing a great job. I see a lot of sports activities, how the students are being recognized, not at only local level, county level, state level, and national level. That goes to, you know, salute to administration, salute to teachers, and salute to everyone, okay? So, good job. Thank you. Now, coming to, there are two things, I heard about the legislation, what you're trying to do on the impact fees. Please do that, but look at the equalization aid. We get zero-dollar equalization aid. So there is, what is happening is, you know, local fair share calculation, local fair share is more than our budget. We get zero dollars. So there is a trick in it. What is happening is, Wynn Gopal is having a bill, S354, Establishing School Funding Formula Task Force. So we have to, please take that note. We have to be member or member of the task force. If they are taking civilians, there are five, five categories they are selecting. So let us be part of that team, or lobby who are on the part of the team. There is a calculation which is submitted to you all by Gautam and Ambika. That letter is there with you all, and I tell you, that is the niche, how we can, because we have less, you know, our population is forty percent senior citizens and other fifty-five percent. So we, if you look at the population calculation, less children are going to the school compared to the population, because we have seniors. So our budget comes out low, but we have too much population to pay. They say that you guys are rich, we are not going to pay. So there should be a correction factor, how the, you know, local fair share is calculated with respect to the seniors, because senior property taxes can be considered, but seniors' income should not be considered, because gross income, I am retired, I have money from 401K, rest of the money, which I'm not getting in hand, because I can withdraw there after the age of seventy-two. So it gets reinvested, but that income is, also comes into the calculation, which is not fair. So we had to sit smartly with the legislatures and talk about it. And I think the group, we can talk inside or outside, but we are all together. And next thing is, elections are coming, the schools are overcrowded, referendums are failing. So I tell you, whether you are standing for municipal election or Board of Education election, it is all one, legislatures. School funding, we need more school funding. That will be the big question voters should ask, okay? So that is, now coming back to the referendum, I'm in support of the, because the 2% cap we should increase, because we need more money. Where the money is not going to come from the heaven, it has to come from the people, because we are going on building, going on building, no impact fee. The money naturally has to be paid by the citizen residents, okay? Or we have to lobby to get the money to support it. We cannot say, we want good schools, no overcrowding, and we don't want money. We don't want to. I think we have to think of it. And thirdly, get the state involved. Get the, we have two referendum fails in last three, 2018 and 2019. Within three years, two referendums-
Thank you, Dr. Param.
So get the school in, state involved.
Yep, and just to address a couple of the things that you had mentioned, with the bill, the assembly bill that you had mentioned, I believe it's in the, it passed the assembly?
The Senate.
Senate, it passed the Senate, it's waiting for the assembly. And that was something that myself, Ms. Fabiano, Ms. Arminio last year, Dr. Lehman, we went down to Trenton, and we did meet with the Department of Education and Senator Greenstein, and we did echo what you said. We asked for representation on the task force. What we did not realize was that when the governor asked for the task force to be created, it had to be done through a bill. Last year, it did not pass through both the Senate and the House. It's back in, went through the Senate, waiting for the assembly now to vote on it. Until they pass that bill, the task force is not going to be formed, unfortunately. We are writing to our legislators, we are asking that they support passing that bill, because only until the task force is created, will they actually look at the calculations and look at, you know, how the formula is, is funding the district. So we are, we are absolutely on top of that, and I do want to recognize that email that you spoke of. We did share that with the Department of Education last year as well, with that formula that was developed by our residents for equalization aid and showing why Monroe is at such a deficit there. So I thank you for your comments.
Mr. Dowling, your answer is fine.
We, we can't take any more comments from you.
Mr. Greenstein, say back, please.
Doctor, thank you, Dr. Param. Good evening.
Good evening. Pete Piero, Monroe Township. My first question is, what is the pay for the new director of athletics, and what is the pay for the new position created for the supervisor of PE and Fine Arts?
Do you want to answer that? Sure.
We are currently going through the applicants. We'll be doing interviews. There is no amount of money that is yet offered until we look at the min's and maxes, we look at the experience of whomever the candidate is that would be offered the position. So there is no dollar amount currently set aside.
I was informed when I called the state attorney general's office that any public entity which has a position, Mr. Gagliardi should probably know this, can advertise without a position, without a pay scale, police officer, starts this, ends this, teacher. That's what goes against the violations of- That's what goes against the violations of bias and stuff like that, not having a scale. How do you apply for the job when you don't even know what the pay is?
Mr. Gagliardi, would you like to answer that?
The state told me that there has to be a pay if the district advertised the job. It could be an in-between, but you can't just say, oh, we're going to interview people, and then we'll tell you where you get paid. That's biased, and it's illegal, they told me.
Okay. I don't, I don't think the district's doing anything illegal, but I, I do think there's an answer to your question. So, um, not unlike some of the other questions raised earlier about the salaries to be offered to different principals, right? When you're talking about almost every position in the district, there is a salary guide. So it's not, it's, so it's not that you, you have no idea what someone might be offered.
It's a new position, correct? So there's no guarantee.
Well, it, it, it's still, it's still going to be governed by an administrative salary guide, but let me give you an example as to how you can offer someone a position if there's a salary guide, but you're not offering it for a set salary. So this is a very com-
Yeah, I understand that.
This is a very common example I'm going to give you. You're offering a, a, a teacher's job, and it, it's a, it's a starting teacher's job. So you're expecting to hire someone out of school. Someone comes to you, and they've worked for three years in either a parochial school or a private school. The district doesn't have to, but can give them credit and place them on the third or fourth step of the guide.
Yes, I understand that.
So you're giving them a recognized salary on the guide, but not the salary of a first-year teacher, even though it's their first year.
I understand that, but I'm saying, there's no, to have a new position, new position, never been here before, how do you advertise without a guide? So, say I want to apply for the job. I come here and I say, what's the pay? I go to the interview and I ask, what's the pay? They're going to say, I don't know, we haven't made it up yet.
That's not what we said.
No, I think they would show you what the administrative salary guide was and where you would fit on it based upon your level of experience.
If it's in the guide, correct?
No.
Well, you, you, if you're going to be an administrator in the district.
I understand what you're saying, but my question, I don't think you understand me, is-
I do.
If it's not already a position, shouldn't it, if you're going to make a new position?
Yes.
Then you have a salary in between, just like a principal, teacher, security, whatever. There's a salary. But if a guy goes to the interview, and there's no salary in, like, if that position's not in the guide.
The position is in the guide, however, because if you're hiring a supervisor or director, even if it's a director of Latin Studies, which you've never had before, there's still a director's salary guide, so you do have a guide.
Okay. Okay. Um, do we have a district grant writer?
This is for, this is for agenda items only.
Oh, I was going to talk about the ROD grant. That's not on the agenda? Okay. I'll wait till the next part. Okay. I'll, I'll just wait till the next part, because I got a bunch of questions for that, too. Um, my, my next question is, we need all this money, we're hurting, we're losing teachers, yet we're paying administrative staff, like, let's say, uh, Mr. Maralta, for instance. Basically, he's now the assistant, or the superintendent's assistant. I don't understand why we need to pay somebody a hundred and forty-eight thousand. Uh, I was told by some two superintendents I know in the county that he was at a superintendent's meeting, and I'm like, uh, I couldn't even tell you why. But my thing is, if we're hurting for money so bad, shouldn't we be cutting some of the administration back and then focusing the money on education, teachers? We're, we're cutting positions, yet we're giving out money to administrative staff. And, and then, my next question, Mr. Gagliardi, is like Mr. Fabiano said, there's a scale for principals. Correct? So if a principal's been a principal for eight years, and a new principal's never been a principal, why would you pay that principal? And I'm not saying there's anything wrong with the principal. What I'm saying is, if there's a guide, and the person's the first year they're being a principal, why aren't they starting the first year of the principal guide? Why are they eight thousand dollars more than an elementary principal that, like, I, I had the same question when I looked the guide. I understand that the other new principal has a doctorate, so I understand why she gets more, but I was just confused that, seeing somebody who's been a principal for so long making a lot less than other people, so I don't, I don't get the guide. I don't, I'm going to look the guide, because I, I think something's definitely wrong there. I also see on the agenda four Mill Lake teachers resigned to special ed. I mean, we cut the BCBA position, which I'm hoping President, Ms. Abarito, CPAC comes up and fights for that position, because I know as the head of security, the three that do it now are way overworked. And to cut that position to make, put money towards the design of a roof, to me, is crazy. Here we go again. We're not worried about our teaching staff, we're more worried about administration, uh, finding money, like, to design a roof's two hundred grand, to do the roof, like Ms. Boras said, six million dollars. So we're taking away from special ed for that reason. I, I just don't understand it. I'm, I'm trying to figure that out. Why, why we're doing that? But, um, I'll be, I have some more questions.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else wishing to speak? Seeing none? Uh, yes? Good evening.
Good evening. Betty Sabarito, Monroe Township, and I am your CPAC leader. Could somebody clarify, there are four BCBA's, is that correct, currently?
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Okay, we will close the public forum. The next item on the agenda is our Assistant Superintendent's Report. Dr. Lehman?
Sure. I have a short report tonight. I figured, uh, since it is Teacher Appreciation Week, the report would be centered on recognizing and acknowledging our staff. Um, so, you know, this week, it's Teacher Appreciation Week. I just wanted to thank the staff, uh, the teachers, anyone in the buildings, for all of the hard work, all of their contributions to the students and our community. You know, we don't get to say it enough, but we think it all the time. Everything you do, we really appreciate. I know the students and the staff do, and the, and the community does as well. We had a nice opportunity with the board meeting scheduled tonight to have our staff appreciation dinner. So I also wanted to thank the student musicians who played the music when we walked in and during our, our meal, as well as the student chefs who, uh, executed and planned the menu. Uh, it was an excellent, it was finger foods and things, it was very well-designed, um, and they do this every year, it's a part of, um, their coursework that they do, and it's just a neat opportunity for them to, um, take what they learn and put it into practice. And, uh, finally, thank you to the staff that helped the students pull off today's dinner. So, thank you very much, that's it.
Thank you. Uh, next item on our agenda is our Superintendent's Report. Mrs. Chanley?
Just to echo, Dr. Lehman said, we're very fortunate that it coincides very nicely with our Teacher of the Year and Staff Recognition Reception Dinner, um, with, um, Staff Employee of the Week acknowledgement. We know also, I believe today is also Nurses Day, if I'm not mistaken, so, um, we have various different positions that are acknowledged throughout the school year, whether it be secretaries, administrative professionals, um, school psychologists and so forth, and today is nurses, and, um, Staff Appreciation is this week. I would like to, um, commend many of the building's administrative teams, as well as the PTOs and PTAs that have done really a great job in acknowledging their staff in each of the buildings. We're very, very fortunate, um, as seen by the collaboration that we have, um, on a, on a daily, weekly, monthly, and yearly basis. We're very, very lucky, because we have great kids and we have, we have a great staff. So we want to definitely, um, acknowledge them. Additionally, as you, you had the opportunity to see, as being part of the audience, um, we did acknowledge our Educational Services Professional of the Year and our Teacher of the Year. We were able to celebrate them in our, our recognition reception. A special shout-out to Chef Dougherty, who cooked all the food. The food was excellent, although it was hors d'oeuvres. Um, the food was excellent, it really was. You definitely walked out of there, you didn't need any additional dinner. And on that note, I would like to also acknowledge that, um, Sunday is Mother's Day. And so for all of us that are mothers, grandmothers, or significant others in different ways, perhaps you're just friends of a family, whatever it might be, um, we are a very important group of people, mothers, and, um, I wish you well, and I hope that you're very well taken care of by your families, and get to enjoy this special day on Sunday. And, uh, I think it's very much, oh, thank you, that's so true. On that note, we have four retirements that I'd like to acknowledge this evening. We have Mr. William Kelly, who is currently a physics teacher at the high school. Um, physics is a very unusual area, and we were very fortunate to have, uh, Mr. Kelly doing a fabulous job. We wish him well on his newest endeavor. We have Ms. Linda Savino also at the high school. She's been an attendance secretary for many, many, many years, and we wish her well on her next journey. Mary Ferguson, who is the, um, Learning Disabilities Teacher Consultant, LDTC, at Oak Tree. I have had the pleasure of working with her personally, because she also was, um, someone that was one of the shared positions at the middle school many, many years ago. We wish her well on her, uh, next travels. And Gail Moretz, who's a parent, Mill Lake, also retiring. So for those four individuals who are starting the next facet of their lives, we wish them health, happiness, and kindness on their next journey. And on that note, I will go to the board agenda. Under a ten-member vote, it is recommended the board approve the attached personal items A through W.
Motion. Second. Okay. Are there any questions? No? Maybe we have a roll call, please, Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
I'm sorry, just one clarification. It's, um, both letter D and E?
Yes.
Okay. Um, yes, recuse on letter U, um, for Mr. Maralta.
Okay. Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Under a nine-member vote, it is recommended the board approve the attached personal items X through AS with the exception of AR.
Make a motion. Motion. Okay. Second. Are there any questions? Ms. Ratner?
Um, yeah, I have, uh, two questions. The first is, um, Ms. Mary Ferguson, is that a resignation or a retirement? Okay. There, I think there, it, there's, yeah, in the agenda. So I just wanted to clarify. Um, and then, the other question, um, other question I had is, um, regarding letter AM, um, which is numbers one to five. I see that there are, um, positions for, um, Ice Cream Bingo at one of the elementary schools. I was wondering, usually when I've had this at my kid's school, it's an, it's a PTO event. Is this a PTO event, um, or is it being run by the school?
It's being run by the school. Their social emotional, uh, learning committee is doing it.
Is that something that they're going to be doing for equity at all of the elementary schools, or is it just at the one for now?
We do as, we have as much parity as possible, but to say that every elementary school has exactly the same events, that would not be so. So, but if it is something that you feel you'd like to see in your child's, now, please reach out to the principal.
Hey, are there any other questions? All right. Seeing none, maybe we have a roll call, please, Ms. Allen?
Yes.
Um, Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, recuse on letter AP for Dr. Higgins, um, recuse on letter AQ for Mr. Ratner.
Um, Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
So under the nine-member vote, letter AR, it's recommended by the Assistant Superintendent of Schools that the board reappoint the following certificated staff for the twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four school year.
Motion. Second. Okay. Are there any questions? Seeing none. Ms. Allen, maybe we have a roll call, please? Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Under Board Action for a Ten-member Vote, it is recommended the board approve the attached Board Action Items A through I.
Motion.
Second. Are there any questions? Ms. Ratner?
Yep. Um, for letter E, is this, um, a presentation, not something being done, um, through a grant, or is this part of our operating budget?
Talking about the Cary Magro presentation?
Uh-huh. Uh, yes.
Yeah, that's some, we include, uh, funds for presentations. Um, we do this in collaboration with our CPAC group, and, uh, it's, we have opportunities to bring in speakers or have events, night events, and things like that. So this is something that, you know, we have planned for each year. Some years, we execute more than others. This is going to be a great event, so.
Okay, great.
If anybody would look out for some advertising, if, uh, you're able to come, please join us.
Right. No, it's good, good to definitely give parents some advice and tips. And then, I just had two quick questions about the policies. Um, the first, I wasn't sure if the changes that we, if what we got was the changes for, um, it's for P zero one four four, the board member orientation. I wasn't sure what the changes were. Do you happen to know what the changes were? Because it was a revision.
It's affecting the timing.
It's timing. Thirty days or something.
Yeah, they're decreasing the time.
Yeah. Okay. Um-
It hasn't changed since the first read.
Okay. And, um, I, I guess my only other question, like, when I was looking at that, I saw that HIB training is listed, um, that all, all board members have to complete that within their first year. Is that something that we have to do? It's in the, towards the end of that policy. I don't recall us doing that this year. I don't know if that's part of Governance One, or if that's something that we have to be doing separately? Okay.
It was briefly covered in Governance One, from what I remember.
Yes.
It was.
Okay. Um, and then, my other question was just, um, P nine one four zero, um, the Citizens' Advisory Committee. Um, I think that the revisions, um, because it did say it was a revision, I was curious if this is something that we are looking into forming. I'm not sure if this is something that could maybe be an extension of the Community Engagement Committee, because obviously it would help engage, you know, some of our public. I know that years ago, there was an education committee that allowed members of the public to participate, as well as then, I actually got the chance to participate in one of the strategic planning committees as a member of the public. So I was just curious if that's something that is being looked into.
Kate, right now, we're voting on the second and final read of that policy. It was brought here for a first read, there were no changes to it, so that's what's on the agenda on this motion right now. We could discuss that, uh, at a later time through policy or through your committee, but right now, we're in the motion to approve that for second and final reading.
Okay. It's just that it's not a mandatory committee, it's just the policy revision.
Yeah.
All right.
Second read, yeah.
Second reading, yes. Anybody have any other questions? No? All right. Ms. Allen, maybe we have a roll call, please?
Yes. Uh, Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you.
Under Board Action for a Nine-member Vote, it is recommended the board approve the attached Board Action Items J through N.
Make a motion. Second. Okay, are there any questions? Right, Ms. Allen, maybe we have a roll call, please?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Bierman, or I'm sorry, Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
Yes, motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the superintendent's report. Wishing everyone well, and once again, Happy Mother's Day.
Thank you. The next item on our agenda is our business administrator's report. Ms. Allen?
It's recommended that board action items A through AB be approved by consent roll call for a 10-member vote.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Ms. Ratner?
Just one quick question, and this was briefly brought up, but I was curious for the BNL contract, which is letter K, if that's something that we can move to June, once we have the actual costs. I know, I had the opportunity to watch the finance meeting, and I echo, you know, Ms. Belko's concerns. And so, obviously, like I trust that the administration will do their due diligence, but I'm just wondering if there's the need to pass that now, or if we can look at that and then look at it. I can make a motion to table the item, but I figured I would ask first if that's a necessity to do for the May meeting.
We, we can approve it tonight, and that doesn't mean we have to follow through with the contract. So, so that we do have the time, we can approve it tonight. And then we can look into the issues.
So just to be clear, if we approve the contract tonight, but then they're unable to work with on price, we can rescind that contract and then find a new contract?
Yes.
Okay. Yep, thank you.
I have a follow-up question on that. So my understanding, we are approving, we're not approving them with a monetary value. We are approving them as a provider.
Correct.
And then once they provide the services and they bill us, or whatever, at that point, we pay. So, like you said, it's not, we're not committing to any monetary.
Right.
And I do want to say that we have to look, as a parent of a senior, it was painful, the cost of the senior portraits.
That's not through BNL.
No.
That's not through this contract.
Oh, that was.
That's not through this contract. All right, does anybody have any other questions?
It's all.
No, all right. Ms. Allen, can we get a roll call?
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Ms. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes, recuse on the bill list for Mr. Ratner, as well as for myself.
Ms. DePain?
Yes, but I'm staying on the item where I'm attending a June 9th workshop.
And Ms. Gerby?
Yes.
And motion passes.
It is recommended that board action items AC be approved by consent roll call for a nine-member vote.
Motion.
Second.
Are there any questions? All right, seeing none, maybe we have a roll call, please? Ms. Belko?
Yes.
Ms. Ratner?
Yes.
Ms. Fabiano?
Yes.
Ms. Alvarez?
Yes.
Ms. DePain?
Yes.
Mr. Tofano?
Yes.
Ms. Bora?
Yes.
Gerby?
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay. Conclude your report? I'm sorry? Oh, my, oh, yes.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the board president's report. I'll make it brief. I wanted to start off by saying thank you to Ms. Alvarez. She left these beautiful roses at our seats this evening as a beautiful gesture for Mother's Day. I was very surprised to see that, and it really did brighten my evening, and I want to thank you very much for that. I know, I'm sure the rest of my board members do as well. It was very nice and very thoughtful.
I didn't get one.
Sorry.
You got Ms. Bierman.
But I want to say thank you very much for that. It was such a very nice gesture. I also just want to say thank you again to our incredible staff and teachers here in Monroe Township, being a parent in the district for the last 16 years. I've had the great pleasure to know so many of our incredible teachers and staff across the entire district. I say it time and time again, our teachers and our staff are second to none. Each and every member of the Monroe Township School District is appreciated for their efforts and make us the greatest district to be a part of. For many years, I stood here at the podium and spoke on behalf of our staff and advocated to give them a fair contract. Tonight, I am proud to be the Board of Education President, who acted on behalf of the board as their co-chief negotiator, and worked with our negotiations team, the administration, and the MTEA negotiations team to come to a memorandum of agreement we voted on unanimously tonight. The negotiations process is not fun. It's very emotional for everyone, and it involves discussions about many things that no one really wants to talk about, like healthcare changes and potential cuts across the district. If there is one word to describe everyone involved in the negotiations, it's passionate. Each and everyone involved was passionate about the role they played at the table. The one thing we had throughout the process, though, was a mutual respect for each other and the positions that we held. I want to thank Karen Bierman, Katie Belko, the administration, Laura Allen, Christine Christie, and the MTEA President Beth Ann Augsback, and her entire team, who worked all last month, nonstop, to get us to the agreement we voted on this evening. I just want to say again, thank you to the board for all the time that it took in reviewing the agreement and voting on this tonight. I think this is a great direction our district is going in. And that concludes my president's report. The next item on the agenda is other board business. Anybody has anything? Ms. Belko?
You stole my thunder.
Sorry.
That's okay. It has been an interesting nine months. I think it's, we've been doing this since October. But it has been a lesson, a hard lesson, interesting, passionate is a good description. But I'm glad that when we did come to the table, and when we, you know, when rubber met the road, we, we got it done. And we, and it's a fair contract, and it's, we're gonna, you know, it's gonna help, you know, do what we need to do. I just also want to thank all the teachers. It is Teacher Appreciation Week, and I want to give a special shout out to the nurses in the district, because it is also Nurses and Hospital Week. So our nurses kind of are double duty. They are nurses as well as teachers and educators. And, you know, we do have a great team, you know. I wished I could have come to that health fair that they held at the middle school. I would have loved that. Ms. Rhea Malto is a colleague of mine. I knew her when, is really what I can say. But I also, you know, just want to thank the, the teachers for being with us, and thank you for the beautiful reception this evening. That was lovely, and I appreciate, you know, all that. We have had some great things going on in the district. I love the calendar, because now I know when softball games are, when things are. It's really kind of cool. Thank you to the committee for, for spearheading that. So that's been, you know, really a good thing. And I have heard good comments about it from the public. So thank you for that. That's all I have for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Tofano?
Yeah, I'd just like to say during the Rec Advisory Board meeting that I sat on, that Norman Olinsky came up with a wonderful idea. He came up with an idea that the 55 and over community was going to participate with 56 or 58 of our seniors in high school in a softball event. So I thought that was a great thing. It's happening on June 2nd. I would hope that the public comes out and supports it, because it's, it's going to be a really nice thing that they're doing. Co-mingling the students with the 55 and over community is something I spoke about before, and I'm glad it's finally come to fruition. I wish I could take credit for it, but it was Norman Olinsky. His card says, an all-around nice guy, so.
Pete, is that going to be played on our field here?
You know, he didn't give me any detail, so I would reach out to the Rec Board and find out. I'm sure you could reach out to the school, too, and, and let's get that done.
Thank you.
It's nice.
Anybody else? Ms. Bora?
So full of appreciation. I want to start with Ms. Alvarez. Thank you. This makes me so happy. Tonight's reception was, the children, the students that were part of the gourmet cooking program blew it out of the park, and I was so fortunate to be part of it. Very appreciative of our teaching staff. We have some of the best teachers ever. And I speak as a parent and a community member when I say that. They go above and beyond, and it's not just this week. I appreciate them every single day as, and as they should be. And my biggest shout out today is to the negotiations committee. You guys are rock stars. For Mrs. Gerby, Ms. Belko, and Ms. Bierman, it was not easy. And of course, on the other side of administrators that were advising, and the MTEA union, it was, this was a trying. There are contract renewals every year, and I've been on that side for most of them, watched the agony of it, and knowing what are, what all major factors impacted this one, and how tight against the timeline we were to make some of the tough decisions. Like you said, if you guys had not been as passionate as you are for the community and for our students, we would not be here today. So a huge thank you to everybody involved in the process for bringing this to fruition on time. I think the biggest thing here is on time. So thank you very much. I really am very appreciative of that. I did want to share that there was going to be a performance by our high school students, the percussion students at Rossmore tomorrow, but unfortunately, it got postponed because the main organizer is not keeping well, and I wish them good health soon, so that we can renew this tradition. This was a pre-COVID tradition. It's a beautiful facility that the students get to perform in, and our community members, the seniors, really enjoy it. So I'm hopeful it'll happen soon. But on that note, big heartfelt thank you to anybody and everybody that was involved in the contract negotiation. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Fabiano?
So just echoing everybody's sentiments tonight, it was a wonderful reception. Congratulations to all of the award recipients. The reception beforehand was amazing, and none of that would have been possible without all our amazing staff and our students who were there. So thank you to everybody. I think I can speak on behalf of all of us, saying that we truly do appreciate you. And Happy Nurses' Day today. On another note, just want to issue a couple more congratulations. I attended the school boards county meeting last Wednesday, so I want to congratulate Ms. DePain, who was selected to be the first vice president secretary to the Middlesex County School Boards. So congratulations, Gail. And I also would like to congratulate Ms. Ratner for being appointed to the Legislative Committee. I think both of them will be huge assets, serving in their roles. So congratulations, and I know you'll serve us well. And lastly, Happy Mother's Day to everybody.
Ms. Ratner?
All right, well now, Mrs. Fabiano stole some of my thunder. So yes, Ms. Alvarez, thank you for the flowers. I wanted to just recognize one of the teachers who is on our list who's leaving us tonight, which is Mrs. Wendy Roth. My daughter had her for a very short time in kindergarten, and my son has actually been with her this year. And she really, she loves her job. She gives her heart and soul to each and every kid. You know, makes parents of these kindergarteners feel at ease that their child will be both educated and loved. I also wanted to acknowledge the recipients that were recognized tonight. The reception was phenomenal. I'm not going to lie, I packed a couple of the desserts to go, and the fellow board members heard me raving about this millionaire shortbread, which I need the recipe for, because it was fantastic. And I also just wanted to acknowledge two of those teachers, specifically Mrs. Barca, who, my daughter was really blessed to have two kindergarten teachers her first year due to a late surge in registration. And, you know, as a mom, I was really nervous. She was being moved to her class two months in. And Ms. Barca just jumped right in. All of the kids were just, you know, felt loved. She was warm and welcoming, and kept the parents, you know, well communicated with. As well as Mr. Fields, who I've had the pleasure of getting to know fairly well this year, because my daughter is in Builders Club, and really enjoys her time there with him, as well as Ms. Sammet. I had the opportunity to attend both of our musicals. So at the high school, it was Mean Girls, which honestly, I went to see a Broadway show the night after. You could barely tell the difference. The students were just so talented. And then I was able to see the middle school musical as well, which was Descendants. And again, the students were phenomenal. And so I wanted to congratulate the directors, Mr. Burns, and Ms. Constantino, who I can never say the name right of, as well as the rest of the staff that was involved. In addition to what Ms. Fabiano mentioned about the New Jersey School Board County Meeting, I did want to just recognize Ms. Bora and Ms. Fabiano, because we were, I guess I said myself, but we were rewarded with the new board member certification. I am definitely proud to serve with people who put a really strong hold on getting professional development and learning. And as Ms. Fabiano had mentioned, I was actually asked, probably because I don't shut up, to join the New Jersey School Board Legislative Committee. And so I actually had the ability to attend the first meeting this past Saturday. It was definitely a worthwhile adventure. It's kind of like what we've seen at some of these symposiums, but it's a smaller group. So it allowed me to talk to some of the board members from other counties about legislative concerns. In attendance were, I believe they're both Republican Assemblymen from South Jersey, which is Assemblyman McClellan and Assemblyman Simonson. That's hard to say. And obviously, funding is always a hot topic. There were also discussions about bills to assist with the teacher shortage, teacher evaluation requirements, and, and some of the harassment and bullying law concerns, which other districts share some of the sentiments that we've heard here. So as I hear things, I will certainly bring them back to our district. And Happy Mother's Day, and thank you to all our teachers, to our teachers that are serving on the board, as well as to our nurses and our nurses serving on the board. Thank you.
Mr. Payne?
Yes, I want to echo everybody. I don't want to repeat everything again. This evening was just wonderful. When you can sit back and enjoy a wonderful meal made by your students, and watch the terrific teachers and the assistants, the, I know one RPO was honored. Other educational people that are involved in your children's education every day honored this evening. That's the most enjoyable evening to see that, well, especially, the next enjoyable one is to see the students honored. That's great. I wanted to also mention that next week is Special Education Week. So let's all remember all of our special ed teachers that really go out of their way for all of our children that are needing all the special ed attention. And I wanted to say that at that Middlesex County meeting, we had mentioned in our committee that we were going to try to be, Monroe would be the leader in doing a letter-writing campaign, and getting the other districts involved, who were cheated out of, I don't want to say cheated out of money, were not given the correct amount of money that we need to keep our district running properly. And I went to each table, and that night, I found South Brunswick, ourselves, Biscataway, Old Bridge, Freehold Regional, and Jackson Township were among the ones that I've been looking up. And we had asked Mr. Maraldo to help us put a letter together to send out to all these districts, so that they can send out to all their people, so we can bombard the legislators in Trenton to make sure that we're all given our fair share of money to run your district in the proper way. So. And I have to say, I don't want to brag, but I have two children, who are not children, two adults, who are teachers in New Brunswick, and I have a daughter that's a labor and delivery nurse. So they kind of fall under your auspices tonight of honoring teachers. I'm very proud of them, have always been, just as though as I'm proud of the people here in Monroe Township. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Alvarez?
Real quick, I just wanted to piggyback on the conversation we started to have about possibly having to go above cap. And I think it would be a good idea if we did a presentation for the public, or if the district considered doing a presentation for the public at a meeting, short one, just to explain the funding formula, how it works, how the calculations are figured out, so that the public understands why we aren't funded at the same level as other districts in the surrounding areas. I think with that knowledge, before possibly going out to vote, it would be beneficial to, to the public.
But Ms. Alvarez, by the way, thank you for my, I think it would be an excellent idea. I'm going to work with Ms. Allen, and of course, speak with Ms. Bierman, because she is the finance chair. I think it would be an excellent idea to possibly do it at our next finance meeting. We could have a conversation and very layman, very easy explanations of, here's the funding formula, here's the calculation, what we come up with, what we come up with. And I did provide to everyone, you saw the differences. So I think it is, I think it's a good idea, because I think then the public can actually see why we have a problem meeting 2% with the amount of monies that we get. Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay, the next item on our agenda is our public forum. Anybody wishing to speak to the board may come up and do so. You have four minutes. Please state your name and municipality.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Patricia Mazerick. I live in Greenbrier, an active adult community of 600 voters. In addition to, in addition to speaking as a Monroe Township resident, I am speaking with professional knowledge as a former health and physical education teacher with 30 years' experience, and a successful tennis coach with over 200 wins. More important, I come before you tonight as a grandmother whose granddaughter is in treatment for Lyme disease and will have no medical benefits after June 30th. I stand before you as a mother whose daughter is battling Lyme disease for nine years and will have no medical benefits as of June 30th. If you, Madam Superintendent, do not renew Mr. Dowling's contract, you would not only strip him of his livelihood and his ability to take care of his family, but you would put his family at risk, both physically and mentally. How could you and members of the Board of Education feel if you were blindsided and had your livelihood and medical benefits taken away from you without just cause? Pause and think about that. In the district where I worked, teachers and administrators that were not going to be rehired were given official written notice in a timely manner, along with the discussion of why this may occur. So far, I believe Mr. Dowling has not been given that notice, nor has he been given any explanation as to why this is happening. For all he has given to the district, Mr. Dowling does not deserve to be treated this way, and the community does not deserve to lose someone whose parents feel made a positive impact on the, on the students. Mr. Dowling connects with the students, and that is why so many students have come out to support him. They will be losing an athletic director that has won awards and is called upon to speak on both the state and national level. Mr. Dowling loves being an athletic director at Monroe Township High School. Many of, many of you, if you attend athletic events or follow social media, Many of you, if you attend athletic events or follow social media, would often hear Mr. Dowling say to the spectators, "It's a great day to be a Falcon," showing how much he loved working at Monroe Township High School. I implore Ms. Chaney and the board to rehire Mr. Dowling as Director of Athletics. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Alex Kotler, Monroe Township, Take Two. So the situation that I have, and this is something that I face with on a regular basis, is the challenges within our transportation department. Both experiencing myself and speaking with other parents, the way the transportation department treats parents and handles certain situations is beyond unacceptable. They are completely dismissive and unwilling to listen or address any concerns that are brought to them by the parents. I understand that the Director of Transportation is on the contract, and there are unions involved and there are challenges involved. However, this contract sooner or later will come to an end. I ask the board, when this contract does come to an end, not to renew it, to pursue other options. Because what happened in the transportation department, they breed a toxic environment, where the employees of that department feel emboldened enough, empowered enough, to completely dismiss parents' concerns without any kind of reprieve. In any environment, when you speak to a person as an individual, you expect to receive some kind of courtesy and respect and a minimal amount of professionalism. And this is not the case. This has not been the case in the five years that I've been dealing with them. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Prakash Parab, 33, dinner drive. President, what I was saying, yesterday I was at Democratic Party Club Meeting in Clearbrook. I gave presentation on Monroe, our empty organization, civic organization, MICA, how we operate and all. Mrs. Green, you know, Senator Greenstein was there, and she talked about different legislations going on. And one thing she said was, there is a task force on the funding formula. So that's what I heard. So I may call and ask whether it is formed or what is, you know, the question is, I don't know what type of legislation, why you need a bill to pass to have a task force? The governor or who has a power can have a task force and then come up with a solution and go to the bill. This is all game. You know, I don't believe in it. Anyway, congratulations for being on the legislature committee. That's great. We have representation. The equalization aid, we have a chance. I tell you, some of the township get 50% of the budget as equalization aid. So take that into consideration. And I tell you, Benson and all have some ideas. So talk to them in a candid way, what the factor can be put in the formula, so that we will qualify for equalization aid. So that will be grateful. Thank you. The second thing, you know, it is devastating that our referendum failed. It is sad, it is bad, it's not good for our children. We supported all three referendum. I tell you, "we" means civic organization. You know, I went and put on signs, because for the students are the first, children are the first. But it failed. This town will never pass any resolution, referendum. The time is calm, state interfere. The law says if two referendums fail within three years, okay, then we can, the district and the board can invite the state to intervene. So, you know, 2018, we failed our middle school. Again, was repeated. 2019, middle schools failed, referendum failed, although it has the high school. So look into that, get the state coming, because if we are going on building and the population is increasing, students are already over capacity for last seven, eight years, and the town is not ready to do anything, legislations are not ready to do anything, they're trying and nothing is happening, and who are struggling are students. There's a law in New Jersey says that they will come in and they will appoint, please, they are not going to say that we are going to construct a basic school. They will construct minimums basic. If the township says, "We want more advanced school," they will, they will tell, the guy, they will appoint a judge. And the judge will come here and conduct two or three public meetings and ask the people what you all want, okay? And he will look, scrutinize the district, top to bottom, and see how the distribution of the students are done, how we are operating, everything. We want to hear as a public. If the referendum is failing, we want the state to interfere, okay? And if you all are not agreeing, please consider that equation. That's our request. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Gagliardi, if I could ask you to comment on the state's involvement when they, after a referendum fails?
President, I forgot one thing.
Sure.
There is a one thing, is Ohm-Fike Run is on 21st. We lost a child, Ohm Parik, six years back, in his memory for pediatric cancer. There is a run and walk. Please come and support. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gagliardi?
Sure. So in a nutshell, that remedy exists theoretically, but it is very, very rarely imposed by the Department of Education. Essentially, what you would need to demonstrate after a series of failed referenda is that the referenda failure render you in a position where you're not certain you can deliver a thorough and efficient education. And it has to be to that level before the Commissioner of Education will, in essence, step in in lieu of your voters. So it exists on paper, but you will find that it is exceedingly challenging to get the Department of Education to take that sort of action.
Thank you.
Pete Zero, Monroe Township. My first question before, do we have a district grant writer?
A district grant, yes, we do.
Do we pay somebody to do that?
Yes.
Who's writing the rod grant?
We have a person who's in charge of grants and assurance, and that is separate from the rod grants. The rod grants have been and continue to be done by Mr. Teague, and they were all submitted this past Friday.
Okay, so Mr. Teague did the grant? Okay. I just was curious. My next question is, I believe when Gorski was the BA, we were always 2% under cap. Is that correct?
No, that's not correct.
We were over cap, and it went to the voters?
Yes.
No, I don't remember that.
Dr. Hamilton was the superintendent, yes. I don't remember what year that was, but yes, we went to the, they went to the township and made a presentation to the council.
Okay, so in reference to Gorski, we paid him $103,000 to sit home for six months, $35,000 on a forensic audit, and we found no criminal wrongdoings. Is that correct? Nothing criminal?
I have no comment. Continue.
Mr. Gagliardi, do you want to?
No, you can direct your questions to the Chair.
I guess it's basically that we don't care about the taxpayer money, that, you know, we don't like the guy, so we're gonna get rid of him any way we can. With health insurance, did we negotiate for a new health insurance? Are the teachers going under the state plan?
Mr. Gagliardi, that's not something we can comment on at this point, is it?
I thought you just said you settled the contract. Am I wrong?
So the reason that the board has been cautious about releasing the details is because the contract, the contract needs to be ratified, and you don't want to be accused of circumventing...
Yes, no, I understand. I was a PBA president. I understand totally.
Okay, you got it. Thank you, sir.
My next question is, Mr. Gagliardi does a fine job. We paid Mary Smith 200 grand to be our attorney. Why can't we just pay Mr. Gagliardi to be our attorney? Why are we paying hourly? My understanding is that we're over $350,000 probably in attorney fees, when if Mr. Gagliardi was our in-house attorney, he would just be our attorney. Like, I don't understand why we don't have an in-house attorney. Like, is that a possibility, that we could get one, instead of just paying fees after fees after fees after fees? I mean, we're talking about, I'd rather see the money going towards education, and that's why I don't really offer things, because I understand it costs money, like other people who offered everything before they were on the board. Am I gonna get an answer or not? Ms. Ratner brought up Ms. Roth. It's my understanding that Ms. Roth's been in our district for 30 years, and she's leaving to go to another school district. I have to question why. You don't leave a place after 30 years to go somewhere else. I look at the resignations, I talk to teachers, teachers talk to me all the time, I live in Monroe. They said that they're treated poorly, they're not respected, they're cut every ways is from the teachers. Let me talk about truancy, too. When Naumick was the truant officer, we had several cases that went to municipal court. My understanding is that there hasn't been any cases. I was told by somebody that there's a child in middle school that's missed over 70 days of school, and there's been no action taken. And I know you're not gonna answer me, but I'd just like to know, do we have truant people, and are we doing things? Because I know that we sign truant complaints at least 20 a year for the last 10 years, and my understanding is, there hasn't been one truant complaint. And I'm sure every kid's not going to school. I could guarantee that. My other question is, why do we only hire four part-time armed security? Shouldn't we have hired six? And shouldn't we have the security guards come in when the childcare starts at seven? And since you have two, leave at seven at night? Can I make a suggestion? You take the Barclay Brook and Brookside School, if you're not gonna put two people there, and put the kids in aftercare in one school? And same thing with Appleworth and Oaktree? It does no good for them kids if a guy's in Oaktree and something happens in Appleworth or vice versa. I mean, it's simple. Hire two people or move the aftercare kids to one school, if we're worried about student I've also been told by numerous staff members that there's part-time security guys working in the school, not using Level 3 holsters, with drop-in holsters. Means if a fight breaks out, something happens, you're gonna get easily fall out. So I'd like you to check into that. I've also heard that the middle school is out of control.
Thank you, your time is up. And security is not something that we are going to discuss publicly here.
No, I know.
I'm sorry, your time is up. Your time is up. Thank you.
I'm making suggestions to you to make the school safe.
Our schools are very safe, and we take safety of the utmost importance. And we have put measures in place and made changes across the district this year that have increased our security. Thank you very much. Anybody else wishing to speak?
Good evening, Derek Arts, Monroe Township, New Jersey. I heard rumor today, we're gonna seek a little bit of clarification to the rumor, and it was alluded to earlier by one of the public speakers during the agenda portion, about possibly shifting the Board of Education election from November to April. Is there any basis to that? Shifting the Board of Education election from November to April? Again, I heard a rumor today, and then someone else alluded to it in the public portion. So is there any discussion currently amongst the board to do that?
If the budget is voted on by the, if the Board of Education makes a decision to go out to vote to go above the 2% cap, that has to be done in April. If that's done, then the Board of Education, by statute, I believe it's a statute, is moved to April.
Is there a certain committee on the board that gets to vote on that, or is that...
The entire board votes on that.
The entire board. Okay, very good. I appreciate that. My next comment, since it's the open public portion, is about Mr. Dowling and his position. There's also another rumor today, that he was notified that he would not be returning next year. He wasn't being renewed. I looked at the agenda tonight, I did not see his name there. That's very concerning. For several meetings, we've had people of the public come here in mass number, students come up before you. And Mrs. Chaney, when you disagree with somebody that comes here and speaks as a member of the tax-paying and voting public of Monroe, I'm not sure if anybody ever educated you to the fact, but your demeanor changes when someone, you disagree with someone that's speaking. You're smiling now, but you weren't before. You were looking away, you were being dismissive. But I don't know, I'm just letting you know that that's what happens. So I was wondering if anybody would like to just confirm or deny that Mr. Sean Dowling wasn't being renewed for next year?
We cannot comment on personnel issues.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that. But I'm gonna be optimistic, because at the last meeting, I believe you put forth that the new position is Director of Athletics. So presumably, that position is being advertised for. Mr. Dowling could apply for that position. You could then, again, being very optimistic, that if he were to apply, you would listen to the members of the voting public of Monroe Township, the taxpayers of Monroe Township, the student athletes that came here before you. Because, trust me when I say, this is a big hot-button item for every single sports organization in Monroe Township. There's massive numbers of voters there. They're not gonna appreciate this if he does not get that job. No pressure, Mrs. Chaney, but today I was at a track meet, and forgive me for wearing a hat today, I normally wouldn't do this at a meeting such as this, but I was at my daughter's track meet, and I was, my son's basketball came, came right here, Perth Amboy. I happened to be speaking to the Director of Athletics in Perth Amboy. And I said, "Hey, do you know Sean Dowling?" And he said, "Do I know him? He's one of the finest Director of Athletics this state has, and as a matter of fact, at the regional level as well. His credentials are unbelievable, and I heard there's some things going on Monroe Township to try to remove him." "That's a disgrace," he said to me. A disgrace. This is a Director of Athletics in Perth Amboy, New Jersey, he was an older gentleman, so he's been doing the job for quite a while. Then he went through the list of credentials that Mr. Dowling had, which I seem to remember some of those things were on that 40 bullet point list that I had, that I came back, I think, two meetings ago, when I explained some of those to you. He's a highly credentialed man. So look, if there's anything personal going on, and that's why you're trying to remove him, push it aside. Do the right thing. Mrs. Chaney, I understand how it could be a little tough for you right now, but if there's anything personal between you and this gentleman, push it aside. Yes, Ms. Skirby, I understand how you move away right there with that look. It's okay. Just do the right thing. Hire him for the Director of Athletics position. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And we do the right thing here as a Board of Education. We do do the right thing here on the Board of Education. And the Board of Education hires, we do not hire, we approve or not recommendations made by our administration. So if the recommendation, whatever that recommendation comes, that will come before the board, and we will vote on that when it comes. Nobody has removed anybody from any positions. People are talking about contracts not being renewed. The supervisor of athletics does not have a contract that gets renewed annually. That is not something that we do. So unfortunately, I think that the public is misinformed with how personnel items come before the board. Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. Sarah Shama, Monroe Township. Can you clarify on that a little? Sorry, can you hear me? Just clarify on that a little bit, because I am curious as to what is the criteria? How do you determine whether or not somebody will be offered a renewal or extend their contract? Is there some kind of like evaluation or protocol that we follow to say, like, you know, you're graded on these standards, and you're measured on certain levels, to determine whether or not somebody is offered their position? And any position I'm asking?
There is an evaluation process, absolutely, and recommendations for renewals or non-renewals come from the administration.
And are they also done on a, like a smaller scale, like within their community, or is it strictly administrative?
It's administrative.
So when the public does come out, that is not a factor?
Personnel decisions are not made based on what, they're made on decisions by the administration, they're made on evaluations, they're made on various things that are not allowed to be discussed with the public.
Sure.
So unfortunately, the public does not know any evaluation information of any employee in our district, and we're not allowed to discuss that. We're not allowed to discuss many of the items that we talk about in the Personnel Committee. We're just by law, we have to protect our employees, and that is a way of protecting our employees by not divulging their personnel information. They have a right to privacy.
And I completely understand that, and I agree with that 100%, because you're not gonna get into the nitty-gritty of everyone's performance. However, there should be some type of standard...
by not divulging their personnel information. They have a right to privacy.
And I completely understand that, and I agree with that 100%, because you're not going to get into the nitty-gritty of everyone's performance. However, there should be some type of standard or evaluation form even.
Of course, there is.
Well, that's what I'm asking. So, where would the public find that? Because, you know.
You won't. That's not made public.
The type of criteria that's followed to evaluate whether or not someone should remain within the township?
No. Mr. Gagliari, would you like to stop the comment?
Yeah, I think, right, I understand. The question is not to see a copy of evaluations. It's to see a copy of the form.
The questions. What are the questions or criteria in which you determine that someone can continue to do a job? So, when you do like an evaluation, you know, there's like a list of things that you look at.
So, just so you know, we are required, I'm, Dr. Laim could speak on this more, but we're required to use certain formats regarding what we've agreed upon. So, for example, in this district, we use a Marzano model. The Marzano model is very clinic, it's very much a clinician's model. So, it's not the only tool that would be utilized in making a decision whether or not someone returns. There are things that we are not at liberty to share with the public regarding actions, requirements as per someone's job, things that need to get done under the purview of that job, and that is not something that you would see as a tool. You're asking for the tool. A tool is one very small snapshot in the, we, in the recommendation for reemployment, whether it be a teacher or an administrator. So, you can have a tool, but our tools are used for very much a growing model. We ask you to provide evidence of things that you did well. So, that would only be one snapshot of why we would bring someone back or not bring someone back. And then there are requirements within someone's job responsibilities that we're not at liberty to discuss of what is done well, what could be done better, and so on and so forth. So, it's not based upon public opinion that we hire or not hire, nor is it based upon anything personal.
And of course, I wouldn't assume that you would just go based on the public coming in, and that's why, that was my question. Like, is there something that the public can look at and say, this is what these individuals are evaluated on? You know, just like in any other job, you know, that's what, that was my question. And then my other question is about the referendum and the survey. So, what is our intentions for, once we gather that data and information from the survey? Is there an intention to change how we're going to allocate funds in order to vote for the referendum? Or is there a, like, do you, because now we have it laid out a certain way, like, this amount of money for this, and we're building at this school, 17 classrooms here. Are we going to potentially change that because of the outcomes of the survey?
Sure.
So, that's definitely one way of looking at it. So, you're absolutely right. So, if it's $103 million, and we're spending, you know, 47, I'm just talking out of my, off the top of my head. $47 million here, $50 million here. We're going to take the information from the survey, as well as some of the things we started doing is really starting to look at scheduling and graduation requirements, and we're going to be talking about option two for gym, because we're also looking at how to utilize the space. So, if seniors, dual enrollment. So, by doing that, it also might tell us another part of the story of maybe the issue is not in the high school. Maybe now we need to look at the elementary school. And it is going to be one, yes, it's absolutely going to be one way of looking at it. If the recommendation was to go out for another referendum, what does it look like? A lot of people in the public have been saying $10 million, $15 million, add up the roof, add up the HVAC, and only do that. So, that is going to definitely be one piece of the puzzle, without question.
And in, and our, I guess, the public commentary within the survey may give you other suggestions, so then you might put that forth.
Absolutely. Absolutely, if there is other opportunities to look at something differently like we are currently at the high school.
Got it, okay. And my last question was in regards to the potential election change. So, that would be this November would be pushed to April of 2024?
If the board voted to go out for a vote on the budget.
Right, so it's pushing forward, not moving the other one back? Not the November 24 back to April 24? It's the November 23 election pushed to April 24?
Yes.
Got it. Thank you very much.
Shal Arminio, Monroe. I just like a clarification. President Skirby, you said that the board doesn't hire, but I think that's incorrect. Maybe Ms. Gagliari will give us a clearer picture, because I believe that it is the Board of Education that does the hiring based on recommendations from the administration.
And I did clarify my statement, and I did say that. The recommendations come from the administration, and the board votes whether to approve or not approve the recommendation.
But your statement specifically was the board doesn't hire, and that.
And then I continued on and clarified what I said.
So, the board does hire. I just, I just need you to say.
The board does not make the hiring decisions. We do not do the interviews. We do not pick the candidate that we're putting forward to vote on. I think that is important for the public to understand that. We do not take part in, none of us here on the Board of Education, including myself, are in any interviews. We do not take part of looking at the resumes prior to the administration conducting their interviews and making a recommendation. All of that comes up through to the Personnel Committee, who then reviews that. The Personnel Committee then either puts it forward or asks the administration to go back and look at other candidates or possibly repost a job. At that point, the administration makes a recommendation, and then that recommendation to hire somebody comes to the board, and it's either approved or not. So, at the end, yes, the board approves to hire somebody, but we do not pick the person to hire. So, when people are coming up saying, hire this person, the board cannot. We cannot put a person ourselves on the agenda to vote on. That has to come up through the administration as a recommendation to the board.
That's all, and I, and I agree with you. But when you said that the board doesn't hire, I thought that was, I agree with everything you said. You don't have to repeat it. I get it. But I think, and again, I don't want to say legally, but I think that the board is the body that does the hiring after recommendations from the administration. I have no question about that. I just wanted that clarified. If Mr. Gagli, if you allow Mr. Gagliari to correct me, that would be fine. But I don't think a correction is necessary.
No, I don't think so. I mean, I think what I said is accurate. Did I say something incorrect, Mr. Gagliari?
My assumption, but of course, I know what the law is. When you're saying the board doesn't do the hiring, meaning the board can't just hire people, or fire people, for that matter, right? What you meant was the board can only react to recommendations from the superintendent. And I think that's clear.
Thank you. That was clarification I was looking.
And that was answering a member of the public who told this board to hire somebody specifically. We don't do that.
I, I think the public can express themselves as to the desire and recognition of an employee to be either hired or continue to be hired. I mean, I don't think there's anything wrong with that and to, to, to request that the administration and the board, because the board actually ultimately has the vote to, on the recommendation, whether to hire or not, whatever staff member is recommended. So, I think that the public is trying to say, these are the, this is a person or people, you know, down the road who we believe in, who we think has done a good job, and we're asking the board, when they vote, to consider that and either don't vote for the recommendation or ask in personnel, because you could discuss it in personnel, ask to put forward someone that the, the public feels is certainly a good candidate for that job. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brian Fabiano, 19, Patrice, Monroe. You all know my address. So, I have a question first. Maybe Mr. Gagliari, through the president, could give us a little bit of clarification. When an employee is riceed, what is the process for a Donaldson hearing, and how does that take place?
Mr. Gagliari? Sure.
Those, those two things are not the same, but I'll.
So educate me.
Yeah, sure. So, a rice notice is a notice to an employee that the Board of Education may be having a discussion in executive session that may affect the status of that individual's employment. The employment is, the employee is advised of that and given an opportunity to exercise their right to have the board discuss that in public, thereby waiving any privacy rights to discussions about their performance that otherwise would be private. That's how a rice notice works. A, what you referred to as a, as a Donaldson hearing, which isn't really a Donaldson hearing anymore, but I know what you're talking about, is the process by which an employee who has not been recommended for renewal by the superintendent can appear before the Board of Education and, if you forgive the vernacular, plead their case as to why they, they think they should, their employment should continue.
And that, that's in public?
A Donaldson hearing?
Yeah.
No, a Donaldson hearing typically is not public.
But can it, can it be in public? Could it be asked to be in public?
That's, that's up to the employee and their union typically.
Right. And they would do that after finding out that they're non-renewed?
There, there are other steps in the process, but you are correct. That type of hearing comes post-being noticed that they are not recommended for renewal.
Sure. And so, that leads me to a couple of questions. I mean, or I'll just, maybe not questions, just some comments. The only reason why you would not want to renew someone is, I mean, this is maybe a couple of reasons, right? They would, they're not doing a good job. They're not efficient. You want to change the role to expand it more, and they're not going to be qualified, on and on. But I lost my train of thought there. Guess I'm so passionate about this. Ultimately, we have someone who, who is, is respected in the athletics role currently. Here, here's my train of thought, sorry. No, what I was trying to get to is, no one's perfect, not in our real world, not in your seats as board members, as we clearly, obviously, know. And I assume most staff members are not perfect. But if you hear from the, the community and the students and the body here that believe in someone and in the position that they're doing, I would question why you wouldn't give this, this person an opportunity to improve if that's the issue. And, and maybe we'll never know. But sitting before you is a superintendent that's not perfect. We know it, because the state came in and put a corrective action plan in place. They said she misrepresented her credentials for a number of years. I'm not going to here to pass judgment if it happened or not, but the state came in and ordered the district to do things differently moving forward. I didn't see the board, at that point, say, we shouldn't have this superintendent anymore. We didn't let her go. And I'm not saying we should have let you go. I'm just saying that it, we, we shouldn't have double standards, because the board is involved. And you sit here and you say you don't get involved in personnel decisions. Listen, we were all involved in, in the personnel decisions when Shari Chanley was going through the process to become the acting superintendent. We knew before the public, some of us in the public knew before she was even approved that, because there was resistance from the state of not getting approved. It was a personnel issue. But we knew about it.